I believe we're on. Well, go ahead and do a pledge again to start this new special meeting, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. It's now ten...twenty-two? Twenty-two? This is, uh, it's June 27th again, uh, 2018. This is a special meeting. We're starting with a different agenda. And we had, so far, three public comment cards. I don't know if anyone else wants to make a comment, please.
I'm sure we should adopt the agenda first.
No, we need to do a public hearing first.
Okay, correct. But I just wanted to let people know if they would like to, um, the comment cards are on the back door. And it is now, we'll call it still ten twenty-two. Uh, we're gonna bypass adoption and go directly to Agenda Item Three, which is a scheduled public hearing. And we're running a little late, and we'll start that at ten twenty-three. And turn that over to Louise Calstrom, County Accountant.
Um, this is a public hearing for our supplemental budget. It's in the packet. Um, supplemental budget number sixteen for Fund One Point One-One, Commissioners' Fund. So if there's any public comment. So there's no public comment, so, um, Commissioner Huxley, go ahead with your agenda.
Well, but we are, we are in the public hearing. Well, we're not gonna close the public hearing. We closed a public comment.
The, the public hearing was specifically about the supplemental budget.
Correct.
And so no one wanted to speak about that.
We had no public comment, but we are still in the public hearing. We've opened public comment. There's been no public comment. We've closed public comment, but we still have an agenda item. Well, no, 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 no. Okay, but Louise, it showed separately in this item, Three, the packet at pages ninety-six to ninety-nine, so I assumed we were gonna finish that public hearing on that item because it was a standalone with a, with a notice public hearing.
A public hearing is just to hear public comments on that subject. If you want to go to, um, adopt or approving that supplemental budget, we can do that. It's not...
I think we should, and then we can finish that, that portion of the public hearing. We don't need to, to leave that, to leave that open. So you have the floor.
Um, this was presented last week, um, to, uh, the board. It's supplemental budget number sixteen, um, to, um, transfer funds from the general fund to the Commissioners' Fund to adjust the budget for anticipated payroll costs as of six thirty two thousand eighteen, and to establish a revenue budget to receive reimbursements for travel costs. Uh, the difference on this one from last one is that that reimbursement and, um, the line item assigned vehicles has been changed from four thousand dollars to six thousand dollars. And, um, it was pointed out at the last meeting that this, uh, change in the total materials and services was over fifty percent. Therefore, we had to hold a public hearing, which we just did, and it was noticed. And so it's, uh, open for discussion or a motion to approve.
Any discussion from Commissioner Louise?
No, thank you.
Did you say fifty percent or did you say ten percent?
Oh, it's over ten percent.
Okay.
Sorry. It was over fifty percent.
Correct, but, but the, the threshold is ten percent.
The requirement is the ten percent.
And that then would, uh, change, I'm, I have it printed out. I'm not sure what page it was on, but on the resolution on the second, whereas it references the ORS two ninety-four four seventy-one, it should reference ORS two ninety-four four seventy-three, which is the greater than ten percent.
It's on page ninety-seven of the packet, if people are following along.
I have lost my pen. I had it when I came in. I don't know if Carl stole it from me or not. Four seventy-three?
Correct. And one other point, just a point of, of information. When we talked about this item last week, or last Wednesday, there was a question as far as involvement of the Budget Committee. And, uh, if, just as a point of, and this will be included as a, as a supplemental, uh, document, you know, in, a little later in this meeting, Administrator Schroeder. But on page seven of Local Budgeting in Oregon, and this document's posted on the county finance webpage, it's a fifteen or sixteen or seventeen-page document. It's not the man, the main manual. At the bottom of page seven, it specifically says, "Local budget law does not contemplate the involvement of the Budget Committee in adopting supplemental budgets." So that pretty much answered the question. We just weren't sure in our discussion before, but it's very, it's very clear in that document. Um, those were my only...I'll, I'll submit that. Do we have a motion? Oh, and, and also, one other comment, and it was close enough. The, there's another, and I'll address this later, in the, a more expanded budget manual because we were getting into the public notice, and when does the day start? Does it start at the public notice publication day? Where are we gonna have five days? Where are we gonna have four? Uh, it's explained very clearly in the budget manual, which is also on the, on the county finance page.
And I did discuss that with my auditors. I think we're, like I said last week, I think that we are going to get a best practice comment on that noticing because it was the only notice available was a Saturday newspaper. And unless this meeting was held in the evening, it was not going to be five full days.
It, 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 well, it'd be, it was even clearer one, as far as them addressing it in the budget manual. They don't get into evenings or mornings or anything else.
She said that she wouldn't do it if it had been an evening meeting because that would've been five full days. But other than that, it would've, it had to have been, this meeting would've had to been held on Thursday rather than on a Wednesday. And so, uh, we will get from the auditors, we will get a best practices comment on that.
So do we have a motion to approve with the couple of corrections, the, uh, Agenda Item Three for the supplemental budget for the Fund One Dash One, or Dot One-One Commissioners?
And to be clear, there was one correction. That was changing the, um, resolution to say ORS two ninety-four.
That's correct.
Four seventy-three. That's the only correction.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So moved.
Okay, any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, so... If we could go back to Agenda Item Two, which is adoption or amendments to the agenda. Commissioner Boyce, do you have any amendments?
Yeah, I'll try again. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, item on the Agenda Eight with the, uh, all the supplemental budgets, uh, if, wondered if we could approve those all at the same time, with the exception, I believe, Counting Calstrom had two, uh, as I understand, minor corrections she wanted to make to a couple that, um, we could, uh, we could offer.
I have enough comments that we would need, we're gonna need to, or I'm gonna need to go through each one of these individually, or have them discussed individually.
So I withdraw my motion.
Any other amendments, Commissioner?
I would like to, uh, remove item number seven in, uh, in...
You just said, Commissioner Boyce, did you have any other?
No.
Okay.
Item, item, after review, item number seven, Intergovernmental Agreements, IGA Dispatch. We found the intent, uh, from the last meeting was that they were, they were all approved. And so we're removing that item.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Commissioner Boyce?
Also in agreement with CFPA, without Council of Huddle here, it's gonna be difficult to, there's just a little bit of, uh, confusion there. Uh, we do have Representative Coos Forest Protective Association here today. Uh, but I think we, we're gonna probably need to coordinate some kind of a, not a workshop, but just a gathering. It's, it's, I think it's really quite minor, but I don't know if we can resolve it today.
So do you want to...
Just remove it till a, a later date.
Okay. You said there's a representative here? Is that, are, are you okay with that? Or do you wanna make any comments, or?
No, that's fine.
Okay. So, okay, so Commissioner Boyce wants to remove that.
Just table it.
From the, the, okay, so table.
And that was item...
Item six, Agenda Item Six.
Got it.
And then, which one was removed? Seven. Any other amendments?
No.
Commissioner?
No, thank you.
I, I was gonna ask that we move number eight up, um, on the agenda, but you removed so many things. I don't know if we need to.
Oh, wait a minute. Here, County Council just walked in. So, I'm sorry. Would you repeat that, please, Louise?
I, I was going to ask if we can move, uh, number eight to, uh, one of the first, um, agenda items after public comment. Um, but you removed several things, so I'm not sure if I need to do that.
I, I would be hesitant to do that because I'm looking at the roadmaster sitting back there, for, for one example, who is not gonna take very long, and we had him sit for hours at the last meeting.
Yeah, I'm just saying, since you've removed the number six and number seven, it moves it up to...
Well, maybe, maybe six won't be removed now because of, of County Council.
All right.
So let's, let's hold on.
I'm a matter of right.
On that. You wanna voice your comments, Commissioner Boyce, to County Council?
Council of Huddle, uh, just repeating, uh, we have Representative Coos Forest Protective Association here today, and I, there seems to be a little confusion on, uh, the agreements that you kindly, uh, offered us, and I'm thinking we might wanna just sit down. I don't know if we can make a decision today on the amount of money that's gonna be allocated for this, uh, year, uh, this budget year. And it might be a good idea just to kinda pull the forces and gather and, and have, not a workshop, but just a simple discussion on clarification.
Yeah, we could certainly continue the item. Also, Jeremy Dumire isn't here today, and he's kinda been shepherding this through, so I would rely on him. And, um, if there's anything, I think continuing it, it's, it's to cover some things that are backdated. I came in here to let you know that I'm still, uh, over at Circuit Court. We're in recess for, till ten forty-five, and I have to go back over there, uh, to Circuit Court. So I'll be here, hopefully, close to eleven. Um, so I've just got a conflict today that was pre-existing.
Question...
Do you need a motion on the item number seven then?
We've, we've referred to it both as table and continue. Do we want to...
I think if you postpone indefinitely, and then staff will just bring it back when we have clarification.
Is that okay with you, then, Commissioner Boyce?
Certainly.
And I, I would imagine that could be brought back within a month. I think we're having a meeting in the middle of July, around the eighteenth or something like that.
We have a meeting on the eighteenth. We also are gonna have a workshop on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
So we, we have unanimous consensus to continue this item?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So I need to be excused, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me.
Thank you for coming in.
All right.
Louise, you wanna come up, you wanna go up there again? I'm, I'm looking at what we do have left now, and I think, I think we need to move, well, we have the public comments, and then I think I would suggest, uh, that we move item eleven, which is showing just a couple of minutes for each item, that we move eleven up, and move Able Insurance up to follow, um, Agenda Item Five, so we can not have them sitting here.
That's good.
Uh, so, so move...and then, let's see.
So eleven now becomes five A?
We could do that. Move and make, just call it five A, and then we'll have a sub-A and a sub-B under that, but that's fine. We'll make it a five A. How about a five? Yeah, five A's fine. That, that's right. We're just gonna move eleven after five. And then to...
And if, um, Count, if, uh, Council is not going to be here, I'm not sure what we're doing with number ten.
We can sort of leave that where it is and deal with it depending on any...
If he comes back, he doesn't, we'll just table it.
We can table that one. I'm inclined, because of the time, to move then the master, and I'm looking at, at the ten minutes, maybe, for master payroll, to move master payroll after...
I would prefer that supplemental budgets came before master payroll.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, we'll leave it with, with moving eleven after five, call it five A. Do we have...
And removing six and seven.
I'm sorry?
And removing six and seven.
Correct. Removing six and seven. So do we have a motion, Commissioner Boyce, to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we've adopted ten thirty-eight. On public comments, we had three. The first was Lucy Labonte. It didn't really have any subject, Lucy, so you wanna state the subject?
Good morning. Well, actually, your speaker slip confused me because it said Agenda Item, and mine was a public comment, something not on the agenda. So that's, that was why it's a little bit weird looking.
Okay.
So anyway, um, my name's Lucy Labonte, and I'm president of the League of Women Voters of Curry County, and I have a letter to read, um, to the Commission. Dear Commissioners, the League of Women Voters of Curry County encourages informed and active participation in government. The League influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League of Women Voters of Curry County observers are volunteers who have agreed to serve as observers at meetings of major committees and commissions in the city and county government. Observers report to the League of Women Voters Board so that the Board can take action on issues that the League has concerns about. Only the League of Women Voters of, of Curry County President or their designee can speak for the League. Carol Simas has been the League of Women Voters of Curry County Observer for the past year. She is now changing her role in the League, and the President has appointed Hossie Taylor as the League of Women Voters of Curry County to the County Commission for two thousand eighteen nineteen. And I'm proud to introduce to, to you, Hossie Taylor. Hossie, could you come up?
Welcome.
Why don't you come up here, 'cause that way the audience at home can see you. So this is Hossie, and we know you will enjoy having Ms. Taylor observe your meetings, and hope you will provide her with any information she may need regarding the issues facing Curry County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hossie. And I will say that the past year, um, our League, uh, membership has more than doubled, and we're very proud of that. Uh, so we will, can continue doing our very popular candidate forums. And we have not been doing a lot of advocacy in the past few years, but now that our membership has grown, they are asking us to actually do more advocacy on issues. And I know that sometimes there are issues that our observers report that the county is working on, uh, that we should be making comment on. So you can expect next year to see, our year starts July first, too. So when I say next year, um, July first, starting July first, that, um, you may see me a little bit more, uh, citing our positions on certain issues that you're working on. So thank you.
Commissioner Boyce?
Is okay if we refer to you as Commissioner Labonte?
Well, actually, this role, I'm president of League of Women Voters at Curry County.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
To your comment as far as the very popular candidate forums, what are the League of Women Voters' plans to change their policy of not, of forbidding any recording of those candidate forums and make it more...
Actually, we have, we have had some discussion with one of the local radio stations, and it's not, what happened years ago was that one of the candidates came in, they had, and my time's almost up, had a TV station, uh, record his opening speech, and then he used that for his campaign. So that's why we don't allow recording. We will allow recording in its entirety if it's played back in its entirety. So we are working with a public radio station in Brookings to do it in that way. That's how we've done it in the past, and it's just, we just don't want people using it for their campaign. So that's why that policy was, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Lucy.
And my time's up. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So we'll enter this into the record. Let you do that. Okay, the second speaker slip was from Carl King, and the agenda topic, it's not on the agenda, but the topic was Curry County Voices' update.
Thank you, Carl King, The Secret Road, uh, president of the Gold Beach Rotary Foundation, doing business as Curry County Voices. I wanna thank the Commissioners. We have received the equipment that was purchased with the restricted PEG funds, fee funds. Uh, tonight, our first group of six volunteers will complete their training with Charles from Brant Media, as provided for in our agreements. And in July, we will start filming events throughout the county, and hope that by August, September at the latest, assuming we can learn how to edit, we will have programming on Channel one eighty-two. A key component of our training is the fact that we have scheduled it for Wednesday evenings, when Brant Media is usually in the county filming your meetings and your workshops, uh, where you typically have at least two meetings and two workshops a month. That means Charles needs to travel a great distance to be here on Wednesday evenings, only one out of the five scheduled trainings. If you reduce the amount that you have Brant Media, Media train, we need to have notice of it fairly soon because we have had to make space arrangements to hold these trainings, and we currently have those arrangements based upon our being able to continue to have a Wednesday evening training. If we have to schedule, reschedule them so that we have every other Wednesday night, and only two a month, it will postpone when we can really get into our third training, which we plan to use for, uh, the kids in the high schools and the middle schools. So, uh, I, I, my personal preference is that you keep filming your workshops, uh, 'cause it makes Curry County Voices' life much easier. But again, I, I really wanted to thank you for the equipment. It's state of the art. You'll see us around at Port Orford and in Gold Beach, and especially at the county fair, uh, publicizing the things that the citizens of Curry County are doing to make life better here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, how about, uh, is there nothing more, I'm sorry, more public comments, yes?
The third card was from Jay Trost, and the subject is farewell address.
Morning, Commission. I just wanted to take a moment. Uh, this is my last week with the county, and I wanted to take a, a little bit of time to say, uh, thank you to the Commission for allowing me to, uh, do my job. Um, it has been an absolute privilege to work with such passionate county employees. Um, you know, there's, the, the people who are here, uh, they come here day in and day out, and they are passionate about providing service. Um, it's been an absolute honor to serve the citizens of Curry County, uh, working with the school districts, um, in the different capacities of parks and juvenile. The community, this community is, is a strong community, and, uh, and I've, I've, it's been a bright spot in my career to be able to, uh, to serve that community in the capacity that I have. So I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, thank you guys, um, for, uh, for all the work that you do, and for allowing me to do mine. The departments are in great hands, and, uh, I think there's some, a bright future for Curry County in the upcoming year.
Thank you, Jay. Do you have any comments?
Mr. Trost, you know I hate to see you go. And, uh, deep, deep appreciation for all that you've done for this county, and, um, I wish you the very best, your family, your business, um, your efforts, the teams that you have held together, uh, the coordinating and the, the collection of the two huge responsibilities you've had. I think you're leaving us in very good hands. Uh, it would be inappropriate for me to mention the name of your restaurant that happens to be at the bottom of the hill at the port on the left, you know? But my best to you, and, uh, I hope you stay active. I know you will in community efforts and, and, uh, volunteer, and, uh, we need your voice a lot. Thanks again.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, we had one other one here, um, that, when the individual did come in, so, filled one out, filled a card out. That was Lauren Paulson. You wanna come up? Your agenda item is the Curry Coastal Pilot. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Or your comment?
Uh, my name is Lauren Paulson, and if I may, uh, request, uh, one minute notice that my time is up. I kinda got cut off last time I was here on an issue.
I think, is that lit, John? Just wait. Is that lit up?
Lit now.
Okay, that, that will show you when...
Thirty seconds.
I think, is it orange and it's thirty, and red and it's fifteen, I believe?
I see it here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm here on something positive. It may sound a bit negative, but it's really important, I believe. The message is, uh, Taken from the Bonfire of the Vanities. Uh, at the end of that movie, Morgan Freeman, the actor, admonished the crowd that was assembled there to hang someone. He said, "Be decent. Be decent to each other." And I'm here because I believe the Curry Coastal Pilot is not decent. They're not decent to us. They're inaccurate, and they're providing information to the public in a way that is misleading. And it's really important what's going wrong here. The reason I'm so sensitive to this is because I've had this happen to me in another place and another time. And it's really rough to go through. So I, if I, if I may, I wanna compliment Commissioner Huxley. I wanna compliment- When I got to town, I went to the Curry Coastal Pilot with information that no one else in Oregon had. It was on the topic of foreclosure. Why did I know so much about foreclosure? Because I got foreclosed on. And I know the feeling of what it's like when people are not decent to me. And that, I fear, is what's happening to Commissioner Boyce. I think it happened to Commissioner Brown, and I know it happened to Commissioner Idson. How do I know that? Because I checked it out. I talked to him eyeball to eyeball, I researched the issue, and it has to do with rehome. The wheels have fallen off on the rehome, because the Curry Coastal Pilot, in their reporting, was flat wrong. They provided information to you and to the public that was flat wrong. I researched it, I reported it to them, and I see I've got thirty seconds, and I'll wind up in real close to that time. The whole issue of the rehome must be readdressed by this body, and I hope that that will happen soon. I hope Curry Coastal Pilot will help us report accurately. And on a final comment, what they are doing to Commissioner Boyce right now is wrong. And how do I know that? I've been to the fire meetings, I've been to other meetings where Commissioner Boyce is there. He's the voice of fire suppression in Curry County, and to all the important work that needs to be done there, and I hope that, I hope this body will recognize that as you move down the line. Thank you.
Mr. Paulson?
Thank you.
Let us know how we can hopefully bring everybody together on the rehome project. I know that's something that's near and dear to you, and I think it's important, and I think that you could be the catalyst there to bring the pilot, the Board of Commissioners, the cities, interested citizens, bring us all together, and let's see if we can get some work done. And I would appreciate that opportunity to help any way that I can. Thank you.
I'm committed 100% to that project.
Okay.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you, Hall.
Okay, we're going to move to Agenda Item 5, and I see the roadmaster back there.
Curry County Roadmaster, Richard Christensen. I'm bringing back a follow-up item from last week's meeting to, instead of doing a rent-to-own purchase of a pneumatic tire roller, to buy it outright in order to save $14,000 plus almost $15,000 in interest over seven years. And so in front of you is the agreement, and we'd like to get permission to move forward for this purchase.
We have a motion to approve the...
The road...
Purchase agreement as...
Yes, so moved.
Of the... We removed the one, we removed the one.
They approved the purchase of the one, denied the rental.
Yeah, I thought we approved the first, and then we sort of went back and forth and removed the second one from...
That's correct.
The agenda. Okay. Okay, so I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Sorry you hadn't come back.
No worries. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're going to jump down to Amy. Able Insurance, which is now Agenda Item... Wait a minute.
5A.
Five, 5A, that's correct.
Good morning. Amy Timmy is Able Insurance. So I'm here just to ask you guys to approve the three quotes that we have provided to you for the workers' comp, the airport liability, and then the CIS property liability and crime insurance policies.
I have no questions, Mr. Vice Chair.
No questions? County accountant, Colstrom.
Louise Colstrom, county accountant. Is that airport one liability, is that transferable?
So, yes, actually, we've talked to the carrier, and we were hoping this all would be done before the renewal date, so it'd be kind of a clean transition. It doesn't look like it might not be done before the renewal. So the carrier has said, you know, you're only going to pay for the number of days you use, and the balance is going to transfer over to the new buyer.
We're anticipating a closing date of the 12th of July. The carrier will bill us for the first 12 days or after the fact. So there's a gentleman's agreement to handle this, and will be carried throughout.
Do, I want to ask Louise on this because of the coverage. Would you prefer that we do these separately, or do them together? Or does Able Insurance have a preference or not?
Are there three separate orders? I don't, I don't have the packet, so I don't know what...
There are three separate resolutions and orders, so...
In order for them to be filed correctly at the clerk, I'd rather you do each one separately. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, on the safe workers' comp, coverage through Able Insurance, I'll make a motion that we approve that order.
On the workers' comp?
On Item 11A, yes, workers' compensation.
Okay. I will second that. Any further discussion on that one? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye?
Mr. Vice Chair, I'll move that we approve the order for the airport liability insurance as Mrs. Timmy has outlined there with the clarifications.
Okay, I will second that motion. Any further discussion on that? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye?
Mr. Vice Chair, I will make the motion that we also approve the CIS liability and property and crime insurance through Able Insurance in that order.
Okay, I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that was easy.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are now going to go to supplemental budgets, is that correct?
Louise Colstrom, county accountant, and Amy found my pen, so you guys don't need to look for that anymore. And I have returned, it's pinned to her. Thank you for, let me use that. So the first supplemental budget is supplemental budget number 17. It does have an attachment of a memo that discussed each one. I have a couple of comments on this one. On Exhibit B, on the, under Personnel Services, there was a account number... Trying to read across.
What number did you say, Louise?
It's Exhibit B on supplemental number 17.
D, as in?
B as in boy.
Oh, but B, okay.
So, the one that's, the third one down under Personnel Services, it said 110-414-00, and that number should be 41515. And then on...
May I, would you repeat that, please? I just pulled it up after you said that.
Okay, Exhibit B, on Personnel Services.
Okay.
The third line that's there, it says 110-414-00, 490-00-2300, Pierce County. That number should be, instead of 414-00, it should be 41515, like the rest of those numbers above it.
Okay.
And that's been corrected on the original and initialed by the county administrator. And the second change is on Exhibit J. Okay, so on Exhibit J, on the original that was in the packet, under the column that says budget change, down, way down the bottom, it says total change should be zero, and it's 650, which is not a balanced budget. So what I did was I corrected the second number down in the revenue. It should be, instead of 49, 227, it should be 48, 567. And of course, that carries through to the new budget total, it's the same number, 48-267. That makes the total in total resources 4,760, which matches the total amount and total requirements of 4,760. So those are the two scriven reserves that were discovered after the packet was put together. And so I have a memo that explains each one of these that was included. So if you have any question on any specific one, would you go ahead and ask them?
Commissioner Boyce? I have some comments, some documents. I think at this point, can we move to the other three? I think one was the sheriff's and two were FEMA grants, because my comments are going to affect all of these.
The second supplemental budget is supplemental budget number 18. It's to supplement the budget that the sheriff has, Sheriff's Special Reserve. It has the payroll costs of the sheriff's department for the Chetco fire, and the $81,000 that the US Forest Service, under their contract, reimbursed the sheriff department for those costs. So that is supplemental number 18.
Okay. And I'll wait for, did you have any comments?
Just on the agenda, we don't have numbers, we have letters. So you...
This is not a letter, the letters on...
In the back.
The letters are for, are the exhibits for supplemental budget number 17. Then there's supplemental budget number 18, which has Exhibit A.
Okay, on the back, they're sequenced, so, okay. Maybe just refer to a page.
The reference to the budget number will be at the bottom right corner of the supplemental budget exhibit. So Exhibit A, at the bottom, well, and at the top, too, shows supplemental number 18.
Number 18. These should be separate. There's three, there's four separate supplemental budgets. Supplemental number 17 has Exhibits A through O. It has a lot of exhibits. It's the end-of-the-year corrections. The other three are more specific, so this is one of the specific ones.
So would you like to deal with everything that's on number 17 first, then?
Well, I prefer to, because my comments are going to affect, relate to all of these. That's why I'd ask her if she would just go through with her comments, then we can come back and go through all the others. So we've gone through 17, which encompassed A through O, and we've now gone through 18, we're going to come to 19.
Supplemental 19 is to set up grant number 44 to record the cost of the Chetco fire reimbursable by FEMA. I do not know what that dollar amount is, so I did a generous budget so that while I'm closing the fiscal year, I can move these costs into this grant and do a reimbursement request for these costs. And this is for the activity actually during the fire. Supplemental number 20 is to set up grant number 45 to record the road department costs for the Chetco fire, and that would be basically reimbursable from the government for activities after the actual fire. Okay, so we'll start back with supplemental number 17.
I have a, I think it's going to be best for me to put one... My comments are going to have to do with budget law, and the same topics that we discussed last Wednesday, which created the public hearing for today on the one item. Okay. I went further after those discussions into the local budgeting in Oregon, but most particularly into the budget manual, the local budgeting manual that is on the county website. It's, and there were about three very pertinent chapters. And the bottom line, I'd like to, and again, I have the electronic version of this, I'm looking at Administrator Schroeder, and I also have these three, they're portions of the document, they're not the full document, because it's not necessary, along with ORS 294-100, 294-471, which is a bust in 10%, that we talked about in depth, 294-473, which is the greater-than-10%, which we talked at length about. And then also came up over the weekend with 294-311, which has to do with definitions and what is notice. So I'll wait to get these in, but I'm going to quickly go through the...
Did you say quickly?
I'm sorry?
Did you say quickly, sir?
Yes, quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Don't ask me to define quickly.
That'd be tough for you.
The reference, again, to 471 is not correct in many of these. Okay. The memo that had A through O, I counted one, two, three, four, five, six, at least seven, that fell under the greater-than-10% as far as the increase changes. And to go, rather than show this on the screen, I'm just going to read, this is the source here, and this, I'll ask that this be put on the county website also, okay, for today, today's meeting. The source of this is, this local budgeting manual is document number 150-504-420, and its revision date is May of 2000. and its revision date is May of 2012. And again, that is on the finance, it's on the county website page, it's on the finance page. We have on page, the index, there were three that I felt were, you know, the more important chapters for the notice and the applicable statutes, with Chapter 9, 11, and 13. And on, what I've done on these is to highlight and then have an arrow showing exactly the part that that I feel is applicable to the reason for my position. On the notice of the Budget Committee meeting, and this will come back very quickly, okay, "The Budget Officer Must Publish Notice of the Meeting By", and it gives you the options. And there are four options. And those same options repeat themselves throughout the budget, supplemental budget process, the budget hearings, the budget committee meetings. The options are printing it two times in a newspaper, general circulation within the boundaries of the local government, or printing it once in a newspaper of general circulation and posting it on the local government's website, or making it by mailing it by first-class mail through the US Postal Service to each street address, P.O. Box and rural route number within the boundaries of the local government, or hand delivery to each street address within the boundaries of the local government. The bottom line is the notice must be published in the local newspaper.
That's true. That one that you just read, though, is for the Budget Committee meeting, which says twice, and that's the only difference between that and-
I understand, but I'm saying, I want to read this because it's going to tie back. This is the same notice is referenced applying to the other scenarios. That's the reason for this.
Okay, so can I ask you a question?
Surely.
I know you want to go through all this, but we actually kind of went through this last week. There was no way to notice this meeting, so I'm either going to take an audit comment on not noticing some of these supplemental budgets, or I'm going to take an audit comment on you not approving them because they were not noticed. So either way, I think that you, I really do think that you've made your point. I don't want to read all of this, however, I just want to know, if you're not going to approve them because they were not noticed, I'd like to know that. And I still have to do these things. They still will be over appropriation levels. I think the difference is the the action of approving them without being noticed gives me an audit comment on just not being noticed. But the action of not approving them and not correcting our appropriation levels is a lot, looks a lot worse in our audit. So I know that you want to go through all of the laws, but I think we did that last week, and I would prefer you just tell me whether or not we're going to approve these supplemental budgets.
No, I'll let you answer that first, Mr. Vice Chair.
I had hoped that I would not have been interrupted, but I, okay.
Excuse me, who interrupted you? I'm sorry.
I did ask if I could speak.
Anyway.
I'm going to, Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, I'm going to just, I've got a sense that this meeting's not going to be productive today, and so I'm a little... I wish I could say I'm puzzled, but I'm, I guess I could have anticipated that.
I'm going to call a point of order, and I'm going to finish my comments.
Ms. Callstrom, I feel really bad that you're in this situation, and I can just feel the tension in this room, and I'm trying to understand how we get around this.
I'm going to finish my comments, Commissioner.
Are your comments directed towards a-
I raised my hand and was a notice.
Comments are directed, as I was starting to do here, and to run through this.
Normally, you would make a motion and then just make a discussion point after the motion's been made.
But, well, I think we have the option of doing this also for comments, unless you can show me an authority that says we can't have comments like this.
Robert's rules, normally you have to-
We don't, Robert's rules have not been adopted here, we tried to do that.
Unfortunately, that is.
So, if I may.
So you can speak for, okay.
If I may finish, Mr. Vice Chair? Because you talked through me, and I raised my hand, and I was recognized.
I did not, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Boyce.
Thank you very much.
You're recognized to speak.
I just wonder what our objective is, and if we can, in the interest of the 45 minutes we have left for lunch, if we can find some productive joint, shoulder-to-shoulder effort. I mentioned the tension I feel in this room, and I'm, I don't understand that. And we have been down this path, as Accountant Callstrom has recognized and identified, and tried to overcome and help us, and so I just want to give her the chance to do her job and us listen intently and not find the letter of the regulation versus the spirit of getting something accomplished in the next 45 minutes. Thank you.
Would you like to be, have any other comments before I make my comments?
No, sir.
There's two points here, and clearly we, to come back and say that we didn't have time, so we did it wrong anyway, doesn't really make sense with me. There's two, there's two items here, okay, there are two subjects. There's a subject of every, every, and I repeat, every single supplemental budget, regardless of whether it's above 10% or under 10%, requires notice in the local newspapers, according to the laws, okay? Items that are-
And just so you know, it is noticed because it's noticed as an item on the agenda.
Pardon me?
It is noticed because it's not, you're talking a difference between being noticed and having a public hearing. Under 10%, it just needs to be noticed, which it is noticed when it is put on the agenda. And notice that.
I think, I, again, I encourage you to read the budget manual. That's not what the budget manual says, okay? What it does say, because we're going to, okay? And the limits, there was, in page 57, and this is one of these items too, that will be entered into the record. It has on limits and penalties associated with appropriations. I encourage reading that. Basically, there's not one supplemental budget here that has been properly noticed in the newspaper, and either 294-471 may apply, or 294-473 may apply. None of these have been properly noticed, and I will not approve any of them because of that. And we can just cut the conversation short. We either follow the rules of budget law, or we don't.
That properly noticed is that they appear on the agenda. The noticing that you're talking about for the supplemental budget being over 10% just requires a notice of a public hearing, and it does not say, that does not say that I have to notice supplemental budgets separate from the current agenda that was noticed in the paper, like all other commissioners' budget, or board meetings. So it was properly noticed, everything was properly noticed. If they were over 10%, the hearing was not set up or noticed.
And I leave my comments to County Administrator Schroder to read the documents. That's not what the documents say.
So I have a couple of comments here. Though, one thing, I would like to see a motion to adopt Supplemental Budget Number 17 in order to discuss it, because right now we need to discuss that motion. And that would be one of my recommendations.
So moved.
So we have a sec, I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
Louise, I have a question for you. So this is up for adoption. What are the consequences to the county if this is not adopted before June 30th?
This is the only time we set up this special meeting, because this is the only time before June 30th. If we do not approve these supplemental budgets, there will be no supplemental budgets for any of these items. And therefore, we will have audit comments for having multiple, appropriation level, exceeding appropriation levels.
And what will be the effect of the county for that? Will it affect your credit rating?
It does affect the crediting rating, because you have a lot of comments that are like that in your audit.
So in your recommendation, it would be prudent for the county board, in the interests of the taxpayers, to adopt these supplemental budgets?
To adopt these supplemental budgets, approve these supplemental budgets, and to take the audit comment about anything over 10% not having a noticed hearing and a hearing on them.
Thank you.
Ms. Callstrom, if you could repeat that, I would like to make a motion that represents, as I understand, just for, to make sure I understand it there.
It's just to approve the Supplemental Budget Number 17.
Okay.
I think we had a motion and a second for discussion.
Yep, yep.
So I'm waiting.
Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Aye. So, Mr. Vice Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Supplemental Budget 17, as clarified by Councilor Callstrom, or excuse me, Accountant Callstrom. Is that okay?
17 is already done.
Yeah, 17 got denied.
Thought we just, that motion was to discuss?
No, it was to approve it.
That was to approve it.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I don't know.
So we motioned and seconded for discussion, and on 17, which includes Exhibits A through O, we voted, and the vote went down as a tie, basically, so it is not approved.
So now, we'd like to seek a motion for approval of Supplemental Budget Number 18.
So moved.
And I will, for discussion purposes, second that motion.
Call for the question.
No further discussion? Call for the question.
Aye.
No. Do you have 19?
If I, if I may, are we, are we just going to do this for however many times that... And I really appreciate that you identified the consequence for the county, the taxpayers, the citizens, our employees, our efforts, our work, our responsibilities. Thank you. So I'm not sure where that leaves us.
Oh, I'd like to see a motion to adopt Supplemental Budget Number 19.
Are you going to recommend that we do each one on?
You have to.
Yeah, we have to.
They're separate standalone.
There's two more.
Okay. Thank you. I'll so move, Mr. Vice Chair.
I will second for discussion purposes. Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Aye.
No. I'd like to see a motion to adopt Supplemental Budget Number 20.
Magic Number 20, so moved.
I will second for discussion. Call, any further discussion? Call for the question.
Aye.
No.
I have a question for Ms. Callstrom. An year and a half I've gotten to know you, Ms. Callstrom, I, I, it's just really been a very positive thing to see your work in the county, and I have confidence that in this, the law, the spirit of the law, I recognize it, it's made you a little uncomfortable, but I think, I'd love to be in the room when you go before auditors and explain, and I think your confidence would come through, greatly come through, that the intent here was to do the right thing, to get it done on time, to give us really good information consistently, and to absolutely respect and play by the rules. And I just want to give you that little bit of a tribute. I'm sorry that we're in this situation, and I hope that we can ease the tension and figure out a way to move forward. I don't know.
Well, you know,
Thank you again.
You know, an audit comment isn't an audit, is an audit comment. And I have confidence that I did everything I could to avoid that audit comment. So when it comes time to review the audit for 2017-18, I hope the board keeps in mind that I did do that.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
the documents on that one. And I have the electronic if you want. Okay, we're now to Agenda Item 9, which is the Master Payroll.
On Agenda, on Agenda Number 9, Payroll, Master Payroll, and improving the items which were put up for the Agenda last week, we noticed some errors on there. We did correct those errors yesterday. We did post it to the website, and there should be a copy for everybody. Copies on the table here for people who want to review the updated copy for the payroll. With that, I would like to turn it over to Julie Swift.
Good morning, Julie Swift, Payroll and HR. As I was sitting in the back of the room, I noticed one error on the order itself that states the sheriff's salary, Item 1D. I have the salary is 89,532, that is incorrect. It should be 88,480, which it remains the same as. I took this from the order last year and just didn't make that change that was actually approved last year. So that's one change. As far as the spreadsheet goes, Louise was buried in budget and audit and closing the year, and I did forward the spreadsheet to her a few weeks ago, and she just flat out didn't have a chance to review it, which we finally had a chance, she had a chance yesterday, and which is where errors and mistakes were discovered, which is not uncommon in a document this size when there's only one person doing it. So I appreciate her review of it, and you have been given a corrected spreadsheet that Mr. Schroder just referred to, and hopefully it's all right. And she reviewed it again after we made the changes.
So which, you said there was only one, one or two changes?
No, there were, there were actually several. There were, yeah, there were some irregular increases that were in the budget that I wasn't aware of, so I didn't have that. I also didn't incorporate the correct salary for the sheriff. Work comp was different on everybody, because I incorporated the new experience modification into the master payroll, but didn't have it in the budget. So there were, there were just, and I had allocations on public services all messed up, based on-
She looked at the wrong worksheet to do Economic Development, Building and Planning, and I thought, this doesn't look right at all.
Which it wasn't.
So that was the big one, was correcting those, which also corrected the county administrator, because in that old spreadsheet, the county administrator was spread to those. And in the adopted budget, the county administrator is in the BOC office at 100%. So that was another correction. And I'm going to have to publicly admonish Julie for having my salary wrong on the original master payroll, which I told her to correct right away.
Which I did.
Which she did. So those are the main ones. The other ones were small things like just relooking at a couple of individuals, especially the irregulars that they had put in, the hourly wage changes that Julie was not told that they had put that in, although we discussed it in the Budget Committee meetings, she did not know about those, so those were corrected.
So also what this order incorporates is on Item Number 3, in the budget, it was approved for nonrepresented employees with the exception of the elected officials to increase that health insurance contribution by $100 a month.
Are you, are you in the text now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and you said Number 3?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, and what, would you repeat that then, please?
The Budget Committee approved an increase of $100 per month for health insurance contributions for nonrepresented employees with the exception of the elected officials, who will remain at $1,000 a month.
Okay.
And since both unions are in negotiations currently, any changes as a result of that process will be amended on a later document, if there is anything. So this, so Item 1F and G reference that process, that's not complete, so everything for them at this point is unchanged. for them at this point is unchanged.
It also does include the $2,000 a month for certain of the elected officials, which would be Assessor, Clerk, and Treasurer. That was approved in the Budget Committee meetings.
Okay. So with that said, you're after a motion to?
I am after a motion with, with the sheriff's salary corrected in Item 1D.
So moved, Mr. Vice Chair.
And again, that is not, that document's reflected in photocopy but not
Yes.
in what we have in the electronic?
Yes.
In the, in the agenda of the package? Okay, I would second that motion. Any discussion?
No.
How do we differentiate these documents? This has always been a concern of mine, you know, in general, with revisions on documents, in that, you know, we have the one that I printed out, you know, originally that came out over the weekend, but there's not, it would be impossible for me to see, or to even think about trying to see what all those changes were that you referred to, and yet we don't have any revision or anything so that we can see at least what the latest document, you know, is. If you had photocopies, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have any idea what.
One way to tell is that this document in Excel, the header on the document is in the print settings, and the original one was not changed to 1819, and the latest one that was handed out today and sent out last night says 19, 1819 on it, instead of 1718.
But I mean, without, without providing the board all of our documentation with Louise's copies with all the different colors of what I needed to look at, to the copy that I did that I said, okay, these things are okay, and then what comes to you is without all the colors, because that's not, you know.
And I'm not, you know, talking about the colors, I'm talking about the black and white, you know, where you make, you know, worksheet photocopy, and I have no idea what.
Yeah, the copy I got, on the, on the, on the header, I basically titled it, and I put down revised
Okay.
the 26, you know, June 26 on it, so, and then I posted that to the website, so people would know.
Okay, so it shows up as far as revised or June 26?
I titled it as revised 26 on the 26.
Get anything like that so that everybody would know.
Right, so when it's approved, it won't have that revised on it, because the one you're approving is the final document.
Okay. Okay, so we had a motion, we had a second, any further discussion?
No.
Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Item 10, I think then with County Council... Just basically defer it at this point on the discussion.
Yeah, there's basically, yeah, there's basically like four different options that he would be able to speak at length on concerning that, and the Commissioners would have to give us direction for us to join one of these four options, and I think it'd be best to have him available.
Administrator Schroeder?
Yes.
Could I ask you, before we postpone this, if you have had a chance, I know you've been inundated with information and processing and reading, as we all are, do you have a recommendation on this, or a sense on how you might suggest an approach for the board?
I've not had an in-depth discussion with, with Huddle on this issue. I think there's positives on a number of different avenues. We could, you know, join the counties that are currently doing it, we could join the state AG, we could wait for a national. I have not had time to give an opinion on it.
So our next meeting?
On the 18th of July.
Wow. Boy, that puts us behind, or could potentially, excuse me. Okay, I'll...
Well, we, you know, we can reach out and find out if there's a timeline and when they're going to do the amendment, and so there's a private attorney that is collecting counties that are doing this, that have joined. He said he is going to make an amendment plea to the court and add additional counties that are thinking about it. We could find out when that is and get back, and if it's, if it's an urgent matter, we could address it.
Thank you.
We will look into that and get back to you.
Okay, so we'll not have any further discussion with, because the County Council's
No action.
You know, involved in the circuit court. So Item, Agenda Item 12 would be announcements, 12A, Kuzcari Housing Authority, there are two vacancies expiring, expiring January 3, 2021, and April 29, 2022, respectfully. Up here comes County Council, so before I go further, do we want to come back to the opioid litigation discussion? We were sort of deferred that until the next general meeting.
We'll lose almost a month, Counselor.
Sure, no. Well, you saw my memorandum, I believe, it was in the file. I don't have a lot to add to that. Again, there's, there's been an executive session with the entire board. When I listened to it, I think Commissioner Boyce, you may have been by phone, but I'm, don't, I can't remember, but the options for pursuing the opioid litigations are kind of go down three paths. One, we go on our own or join another county and state court. Two, we join a national multi-district litigation. And three, we do nothing and wait for the Attorney General to sue, and then the money trickles down to us, like it did in the tobacco settlement. The advantages in each type are the, the, going our own in state court, we have remedies that aren't available, in, under, that are available under state law, not in the national. If we go with a national, there's just a sense on these large class actions or whatever, multi-district, complex litigation, that the lawyers make most of the money and the clients don't receive a lot, but that's, you know, this is not a consumer case, it's different, so maybe that outcome would be different. And then, and the third one would be wait, wait for the Attorney General, and the idea there is, people said in the tobacco settlement, the trickle-down wasn't satisfactory for the counties. The downside, or the workload for each would probably be the same. It would be essentially the various departments of the county generating documents for each of the lawyers, and I think if you saw from my memo, I presented these options to the board prior, and I didn't, I felt like, I was tasked with bringing back something to the board. I thought I had, and I thought the board didn't give any direction, and therefore we were going with the do-nothing option, which would be essentially relying on the Attorney General, but I don't, I didn't search the minutes of all the meetings to see exactly what was going on. You also have an article in there from June 12, about, you know, a couple of weeks ago, from the Daily Historian, where I think Tillamook County has agreed to use Attorney Tom DeMore, and I think he's been in conversation with Commissioner Boyce and Administrator Schroeder, and if they want to add anything to that, but really it would just take board direction to get into one of these. I don't see any cost for attorney's fees to the county on this at all, but there might be some administrative workup with staff and whatnot, so that's really all I have.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Council, Huddle.
We're dealing with the union mediation also, so.
I thought we had him for questions.
It's okay.
Yeah.
He's, he's getting it done today.
Yeah, well, yeah, we have, he's in court, plus we have mediation with the union.
I thought when he came back, it was, ah, we'll get, we'll get through that one.
Yeah, I guess he's just looking for direction, I guess. The question is, he doesn't seem to have a preference one way or the other, I guess.
Well, if I may, subject to his, almost his approval, I would rather go with the counties, not do the national thing, and not do the state Attorney General thing either way.
So you'd like to see a motion to join with Tom DeMore and the other counties?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm going to make that motion.
Okay.
I want the public to know that we are aware of what this is about, and what it means to our county, what it means to the, all the mental health issues and related matters that we're all dealing with, so, yeah, that's, that would be my motion.
Okay.
I'll second the motion for discussion. I think, and again, the County Council said he'd look back at some of the exec session or something, I, you know, this had a lot of similarities. There's no perfect one that, in my opinion, jumps out here any more than there was, not a perfect one, but even a good one when we were into the legalization of marijuana here a couple, three years ago. If you, do you go out on your own and knowing that there's going to be case law, they're developing things as they go, which has been the case with, certainly with the marijuana, do you, or do you stand back and just let things evolve, which could take years? I, I think I'm inclined to, because there would be no significant, or at least the understanding is there would be no significant additional cost if we join this option that Commissioner Boyce has, has, you know, proposed as one of the three options, I would be inclined to, to agree with that. You know, if it goes down the road and something turns very ugly, you know, that direction, I think the county probably still has the option of bringing it back and making an informed, intelligent change, you know, in association at that point in time, but I would go with that too. So those are my comments. Do you have any other comments, Commissioner Boyce?
No, thank you. Ready for a vote?
Call for that question?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will contact Attorney DeMore, and now that we have board direction.
Thank you.
Okay, so back to announcements, we got on to 12B, Mountain Drive Special Road District Vacancy Term expiring December 31, 2019. July 4, county offices are closed. July 18, a general meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioner's Hearing Room. July 25, a workshop 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioner's Hearing Room. July 25 through 28, have the Curry County Fair in Gold Beach. And G, August 1, a 2018, a general meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioner's Hearing Room. And then we will go to Item 13A and B with County Administrator Schroeder.
At the last meeting, I was directed to seek out attorneys to enforce the travel policy. I've been in communication with a couple of different attorneys, one a recommendation from Solicitor Huddle, and two others from the Association of Oregon Counties. The recommendation from Commissioner Huddle was from Mr. William Gary, and he's out of Eugene, and he is interested in taking on this case. Just this morning, Huddle had sent along with Brenda a 62-page document summarizing the history of this particular case. We have not signed any agreement letter. One of the, the two other people, one of them from the Association of Oregon Counties, I will not name, he basically stepped away, he felt he did not want to take that on. The other individual would be evaluating the situation, so I still have not heard back from him. One of the issues, before we engage within this, within an attorney, we would have to get an appropriations basically from the county board to say we have a limit to spend on this particular issue. What, the key issue in dealing in, from dealing with the board commission, there was three, there was three separate issues of which the board wanted Commissioner Boyce to comply with, one of which was return the keys. Boyce has returned the keys, so that is, that issue has been settled. Another issue is concerning complying with the checking out of the keys from Administrative Assistant John Jesuit, and Commissioner Boyce has agreed to comply with that. A third is to comply within the budget limitations of the Commissioner's budget for travel, which will be reset on July 1, and so starting on July 1, there will be a brand-new budget for that, which will be monitored, but there isn't any monthly or weekly or daily limit for that. That will be Commissioner Boyce, and the rest of the Commissioners will get to choose where or how they want to spend that allocated budget. With that being said, the last remaining item is, is basically excess travel spending above the allocated limit, which we're still collecting that, those documents, and because the month has not ended yet, our anticipation is that it might be anywhere from $4,000 to $6,000, as Louise had said earlier, and when we had the public meeting, that, that amount will be, will be tried to collect. Before we would engage an attorney, Mr. Boyce will, will be offered the opportunity to enter into a payment plan if he wishes, to avoid litigation on that, and if litigation is the path that we're going down in order to seek judgment, we will be seeking a allocation from the county board to pay for an attorney for this particular judgment. Right now, within the budget, there is, according to Finance Kelstrom, there is a budget for the BOC office for attorneys, but we'll be using that money also for the SEI union negotiations, plus the upcoming road fund negotiations. So this is just, just an update at this point. I guess I'll have further clarifications as we go forward, I'm not ready to make a final recommendation.
If I may, Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
Couple of things I want to present to the board here. We just got, here's one of the reasons I travel, we just got $1.7 million through the efforts of Association of ONC Counties, which I serve on the board, I met with, we give great credit, where credit is due, and that's to Congressman Walden, Oregon Second District, and that's a million dollars more than we got last year. So for me to travel, Board, I think, forgive me, I think, there it is right there, this is from David Crumley, I reported this, not this amount, because I wasn't really, I didn't feel I was in liberty to do that yet, but I attend these board meetings and I contribute, and I went to Medford to see Congressman Walden, so just to justify the efforts that I have there, and why the Commissioners have that responsibility to travel. So I'm going to continue this fight because I absolutely believe that I'm in the right, and when the facts come out, you know, I've been accused of this being a felony, when I have to fight to do my job and Commissioner Hutchely's job, the travel that is required that he refuses to do, that I've gladly done. One thing I want to read here that was referenced by Council Huddle, last meeting, it references here, attending political meetings held for the purpose of their own reelection and other nonofficial business. I just want to, I want the public to know that from February 1 to the end of May, that I had put 5,000 miles on my pickup while I was campaigning for Congress. Reason I ran for Congress, primary reason is because people had their homes burned out in the Chico Bar fire, and they're getting no compensation. So as I go around the state, I've taken on that responsibility to say, we're not giving up any more of our forests, not without a fight, and so if I have to fight my board members, it's ironic that I have to do that, and we're, the laughingstock of Oregon, I mean, the, the continuum of craziness that goes with this. So I will continue to travel around, I said a month ago, I'm going to keep traveling, I'm not going to pay any more out of my pocket. So in those diesel receipts, the five, almost 5,000 miles I put on... So, in those diesel receipts, the five, almost five thousand miles I put on my rig, I also did county business, no chairs at the county, didn't think twice about that. I felt it's my duty, my responsibility, and still stayed within Federal Election Commission guidelines, regulations. So, I'm anxious to have my day in court, and I want to expose what I believe is dysfunction, bias, even corruption that has taken place, the damage that's been done to this county and Curry citizens. And I think the citizens want me to fight, and I'm looking forward to that. So, I didn't hear though today if we're gonna be able to determine what the, what the limit might be on that amount that the county's willing to spend. So, if I, if I just, I can conclude this way, if I just turn in one item where I haven't turned in meals, we're allowed forty-two dollars a day for meals, I've been in office for five hundred and forty days, and I've traveled about a hundred and twenty-five days, that would be six thousand dollars right there that I've gifted back to the county. No, nothing but, nothing but goodwill and good gesture and a sense of responsibility. So, if you want to, if you want to fight to get a few extra bucks that went over the Chico Bar fire to put me in my place, I'm, I'm happy to take on that challenge and I think we'll prevail, and it, it could be as much as twenty-seven thousand dollars that this county owes me. And as I've said in previous meetings, that money will be primarily donated back to the Curry Homeless Coalition, the Curry Vietnam Veterans, the Veterans of Foreign War, and the Curry County Wildfire Protection Group. So, I stand with what I've said, and it'll be up to Commissioner Gold if she wants to continue on with this, with this direction. It is, I mean, only in Curry County, only in Curry County. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're back, I didn't see you come in.
Thank you. So, Commissioner Boyce attributed a quote to me, it was contained in the memo, it was actually a quote from another case. It's not an allegation by me against Commissioner Boyce, it was a quote from another case against another Commissioner in another county where a court held, a court of law said that that was sufficient to create a triable issue, but said that the proof would be subject to proof. But I just wanted to, for the record, let everyone know that I'm not accusing you of doing that kind of travel, it just was a quote from another case.
And I did give you benefit of the doubt, and I appreciate that very much. I just want the public to know how awful that would be. And so, even have that remotely on the radar, I'm gonna fiercely battle that one too, because the contrary is true, and thank you.
Well, I appreciate giving me the chance to clarify that today.
Absolutely, thank you.
That was pretty clear.
Well, again, there's also a speaker slip here, I don't know if the Chair wants to entertain it, but it's from Lauren Paulson.
I think we already had one from Lauren.
I see.
You already spoke.
Okay.
All right. Yeah.
Also, Mr. Vice Chair, here is back to the pilt, quotes from different Commissioners on how important and the hard work that went into getting that money for the county, and especially Commissioner Freeman from Josephine, excuse me, Douglas County, Simon Hare from Josephine County. There's other information on here. I'm, I'm gonna excuse myself. Here's after, here's my two thousand, two thousand seventeen year in review, several pages of work that I did require considerable travel. It's been submitted to the public before, it's on my website. I want them to know that during, not, not just the fire, issues and responsibility way beyond that. So, there's, I think it's six and a half pages, and of course, they can always call if they have any questions, and I'll be glad to answer those. So, I'm going to mine us out of this. Thank you. And I'm gonna need to be excused, I made other plans today.
I, yep, pardon me? Then we have to adjourn. Well, we can't conduct further business.
We can't conduct business, but we can, you can, if you want, you know, on your workshop policy, you can certainly speak of your.
These are the plans I made, if I have plans I made, and this is going on, we didn't think we were gonna have a meeting.
Yeah, so you can still.
And I am available just about any other time, in the interest of the budget and how we're gonna overcome that. So, if I have to work midnight, whatever, Saturday, Sunday, I'll do my best.
You weren't mine.
Well, I'll just continue with a couple other updates. One of the updates I had was a recommendation from the Administrator to the county board would be workshop policy. One of the things I'd like the board to consider in order to save money would be to switch our workshops to a less formal setting down in the Blue Room, where we sit around the table with staff and Commissioners and discuss issues. We would not telecast those events, they would be recorded, and recording would be posted online for the public to hear, but it would save the cost of telecasting that, and it would also, I feel just from environment, it's just a more informal setting where people can have more candid discussions with each other instead of the formal setting we have here. That would take Board, they'd take a County Commissioner decision on that, so obviously we'll have to disable that, but that's something that we would have to look at in the future. Other updates, we're looking, we're seeking a engineer review of the Willow Creek Bridge on County Road one thirty-six. That will be, that is considering being downrated as far as its weight class, and so, we'll be looking for an engineer's report from that concerning structurally what we would do with that. The Road Master will be coming back with a report on that particular item. I received a inquiry from the Department of Environmental Quality. Couple of weeks ago, we had sent out a, the county board had sent out a letter stating that they wanted to be, to like twenty different governmental agencies, they want to be interested parties, be provided notice that your agency is considering proposing or taking action within the jurisdiction boundaries of Curry County. And the question that I think goes back to policy issue is, the Department of Environmental Quality wants to know at what level of interaction should these agencies be notified? They do things as innocuous as inspecting gas tanks underneath gas stations and stuff like that. So, they're working within the county district. This was, this happened before I came here, so I was seeking direction from the Commissioners to say, "At what level do you want notification of action by federal or state agencies working within our jurisdiction?" And again, I don't, I can't really help without direction from the county board. There's a marijuana, mental health, and juvenile and jail tax money that was mentioned by Ken Duque last meeting, money that we are seeking direction from the Department of Oregon Health Authority, and I'm seeking clarification on that, and I will share that with both CCH and the county once we figure out where that money can be distributed. Right now, I feel I can't, I don't have the authorization to distribute it due to the programming not being authorized. Those are my updates.
I'd comment, and again, we're just here to discuss this because we have, we don't have a quorum right now. On the, the workshop policy, I'll, I'll give you another copy of the, my concern is because not so much of the audio, but of the legibility or illegibility of the audio and what we've encountered in past years. We went in two thousand seventeen, the first part of two thousand seventeen, were able to redo this room with the new, a newer system with PEG funds. Prior to that, and there were over a hundred meetings that we were not able to do minutes on for a myriad of reasons, one of which was you couldn't hear many cases who was saying what in the meeting. And that was when we had the video with an audio track, you couldn't, because it was not a good system. You literally, at least you could say, you could see who was speaking because you, if you knew that person, because you could see them on the video. The problem, we tried even to have the audio track pulled and enhanced because of auditor notes back years ago on the same issue, you know, that we have now. It was extremely, it, it wasn't a good option. We, we tried it, we, you know, interfaced with a, a firm, we had, we had Brant Media pull the, I didn't pull the, you know, there were no charge, but to pull an audio track and try and enhance it so we could hear more, but there were sections where you just literally could not, you could see, but you couldn't hear them. The issue we had with then trying to enhance the audio tracks is that you could not see them. And if you can hear, if you could hear, or if you couldn't hear, it was moot point because you didn't know who was saying something you couldn't hear anyway. If you could hear them, in many cases, you had no idea because it wasn't great, who was saying, who was speaking. Anyway, the, we had both rooms done, but we had this room done, you know, with the proper equipment to be able to hear all speakers. Last year, or over this past year, we also, because of weak points that we saw from the budget hearing, and this is an actual example of the prior year, where we had trouble hearing some of the budget members because we just put a wireless microphone up there, and maybe we'd have two. If they didn't speak right at it, you couldn't, you couldn't hear them. So, this year, we enhanced that with additional PEG funds, and they were, they were using the wireless microphones, which was stellar because you, it worked great because we could hear every one of them now. Down in that, in that room, there is one of the, you know, the mechanical, you know, recorders that you can see over, just in front of County Council up, up on that thing. You know, that's a recorder, but if you put that down, before we do anything, I would urge, you know, that we at least.
Test it out.
Test it, because if you don't, you will go backwards ten steps and be back to where you can't meet, you know, and then we're back to the public meeting, or, you know, meeting minutes and the law, and even forget the law. There will be problems, there will be big, big problems because we, we planned up here, we got it, most, most of it right the first year, and we enhanced that with what we learned and didn't get right the second year, and we have things pretty, pretty right here now as far as, but almost everybody, you'll, you'll notice times when we'll have somebody in the audience, you know, and they'll say something, and we're quick to say, "Would you please come up to the podium?", because we may be able to hear them at the time, but you play the audio and you can't hear a thing that they said, not a, not a word that they said.
We'll make sure we test anything out, and we'll come back, and we'll come back to the Commissioners at a later date.
County Council?
Well, I noticed Charles Douglas is here, who's our tech, or, excuse me, our technical support with Brant Media. Maybe he can speak to whether an audio recording in the Blue Room would be sufficiently audible with the new equipment that they've installed recently there.
Through the Chair, Charles Douglas, Operations Manager for Brant Media. So, as far as the Blue Room, unlike this room where we performed significant several thousand dollars of PEG funds for upgrading this room, which enabled you to have those additional wireless microphones, two of the four of which are in front of Mr. Jesuit's station, that's why when you set up the Budget Committee in the table right here, each of them, as Commissioner Huxley just mentioned, had their own wireless lapel. The issue with the Blue Room is we've done no upgrades there since day one when we set it up. All there is in the Blue Room right now, the sound system, which works great, and there's a Task cam audio recorder, which works great, and we have one camera instead of three, so you can get a wide shot, you can kind of pan around and get a couple of one shots. If you look up a couple of the Planning Commission meetings we did, I think February, March of two thousand seventeen, you can see, we did a, made the best of the situation there with one camera. The problem with the audio, of course, is that even with partial quorums sort of showing up, as you've discussed in recent months, maybe three people were in the room from the Commission and one or two more on the phone, you only had one wireless lapel that was usually on Community Development Director Johnson, and then you had two stick mics on stands. That was it for the whole room. So, with a room of Carolyn and three people, you can kind of get by with that. If you had the entire board, plus county staff, plus Mr. Jesuit, plus members of the public or presenters who are presenting an item at a workshop, you're gonna start to run out of mics really quickly. So, you would probably need to do some sort of upgrades there to be able to handle that sort of situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Charles. Okay, so, any other? County Council, do you have anything, anything else on that?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I think then we will adjourn the meeting. It's twelve oh five.